All right, we'll call to order the Grand Forks Jobs Development Authority meeting. It's Tuesday, September 3rd, approximately 5:30 PM. Item number one, roll call.
Weigel.
Here.
Soski.
Here.
Uh, Lunskey.
Here.
Uh, Berg.
Here.
Friedols.
Here.
Sandy.
Here.
Vean.
Here.
Bochinski. We have a quorum.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to item number 1.2, election of vice chairperson and secretary slash treasurer.
I'd like to make a motion.
Mr. Friedols, did you have a nomination?
I'd like to nominate Rebecca Osowski for vice chair.
Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion by Friedols, second by Sandy. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
A nomination.
Post same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Ms. Soski?
Um, for tre- treasurer.
Yep.
Secretary. Um, I'd like to nominate Trish Alunsky.
We have a nomination for Ms. Lunskey. Is there a second?
Second.
Oh, second.
By Veen. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations to both of you. Move on to item number two. Action items, 2.1.
And 2.1 is EDA RLF and PACE loan request, Red River Potatoes.
Mr. Lund.
There we go. Chairman Weigel, Vice Chair Osowski, uh, key fund Grand Forks Regional Economic Development Corporation, pinshitting for Kevin Hatcher's in business travel today. Uh, the first project for consideration is that of Red River Potato. Um, Red River Potato is a wholly owned subsidiary of Mesa Verde Trading Company out of California. Uh, they are in the business of taking food product that is not suitable for, um, typical processing and converting that to, uh, particular pet food ingredients. And they have done that in Grand Forks since 2001 when they purchased the facility at 2250 Mill Road. Um, they are going through an expansion because of new contracts and just general growth of their business and are acquiring new dryer, grinder, truck scale, pellet mill, and storage bins. Um, and they are seeking support from the Graff- Grand Forks Growth Fund to support that project. In particular, they're being asked for two loans from the growth fund. One of them is from your EDA revolving loan fund of $270,000. Uh, and that's direct financing. And they are also requesting a PACE loan to help leverage a bank in North Dakota grant. Uh, the loan that they are requesting from the growth fund is just a little over $150,000. And again, that leverages a, uh, a PACE grant of around $281,000. Um, the terms of the notes, the ED revolving fund, revon- revolving loan fund note, which is a direct financing, will be repaid in sixty equal installments at four and a half percent. Uh, the PACE terms, the loan that will leverage the bank in North Dakota grant will be deferred for seven years and will be paid in twelve equal installments at three and a half percent. Uh, collateral on the, uh, both loans would be a subordinate blanket UCC and all the equipment. Uh, secondarily, a corporate guarantee from the parent company, Mesa Verde Trading Company, and then also person guaranteed from the principles of the company. Um, I do understand that Jack Wiegand from the company is online should you have questions for him. Um, but I'm also happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Lund. I'll, any comments from council or the committee? Ms. Soski?
So I see they were established in 2021, correct, in our community?
That's right.
Right? Has anybody done any type of national security risk assessment on them or filled out? I believe we were handed a playbook from CFIUS. Has anybody even looked at any of those questions?
Um, Chairman Weigel, Vice Chairman Osowski, I don't believe that that has occurred. It's an American domestic company that acquired the assets of another American company, so, uh, not candidates for CFIUS or other, to my knowledge, other federal review.
I guess I wasn't asking about a federal review. I'm just asking if we did our due diligence to ensure that there is no national security concern.
The EDC has not done that review, and I'm not aware that anyone has.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Soski. Seeing nothing further, I'll open the public hearing on item 2.1. Is there anybody that'd like to address the committee on items 2.1? Anybody like to address the committee on items 2.1? Yes.
That's me, Jay Alfred. What's that? Do you want to talk about Red River Potatoes? Maybe.
2.1 is the foo- not the, uh, funding for the, uh...
Red River Potatoes, yes.
The Red River Potatoes?
Correct.
How much is it going to be?
It's a request for $270,000 for the EDA, EDA RLF for equipment loan and a $151,342.60 for a PACE loan.
Yes, my question, comment is, uh, I don't know, I don't really, I'm not really happy about the city becoming a bank. I really question that. I mean, there's banks all over this city. Why has the city become a bank? And how many times have we done, has the city done this over the years? And how much have we lost? I heard once that we had one investment, we lost, the city lost $300,000. Well, that's all taxpayer money. I question if that's prudent use of the taxpayer money. And what, what collateral do we have? What, I just don't envision the city of Grand Forks being a bank.
Mr. Sandy, did you want to...
Mr. Nagel, um, an EDA RLF loan is an economic development revolving loan fund program started by the federal government. And communities like ours get money from the federal government that we can loan out to help organizations like, uh, Red River Valley Potatoes grow their business at a reasonable interest rate. So it's not, we're not exactly being a bank. We're propagating a federal program.
Which is taxpayer money. Federal is taxpayer.
It is taxpayer money.
It's all taxpayer money.
It is given to us by the federal government to specifically loan out. And if we don't loan it out, the government will take it away and give it to another community so that they can loan it out and help somebody grow in, in their community.
I see. Okay. I can try to live with that. Thank you.
Counsel, our JDA president, I just want to make a note that there is a bank loan, and it's with the Bank of Sierra, who is the banking entity that, um, Red River Val- Red River Potatoes does banking business with. So the city's not a bank, but our funds do help subsidize that loan, um, interest rate.
Thank you, Mr. Phelan. Any further public comment? Seeing none, is there action from the committee?
I move approval.
We have a motion to approve by Sandy.
Second.
Second by Berg. Seeing no further comments, all those in...
I have a comment.
Okay.
I guess I, I'm disappointed to hear that the EDC won't even use the documents that were given to us by CFIUS to even just do our own due diligence. At least then, if we do end up in another Foo Fang situation, at least we can say that, that we tried. And so I will not be voting in favor of this because I do not think that the city did do their due diligence in ensuring that there are no national security risks.
Thank you. Further comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, did gentlemen from the company want to say something?
Yeah, no, I just wanted to touch on the NSA comm- committee earlier. My name is Dana Wiegand. I'm with Red River Potatoes. We're based out of Fresno, California, is where our parent company is, Mesa Verde Trading. We came up to Red River Valley because there's a abundance of raw potatoes up there. You guys are worried about your due diligence within our organization. Happy to have you guys out to the facility and come and meet us whenever we come back there again. I will be back there in about a week and a half, and, uh, my brother, uh, will be there two weeks from now. So we have multiple entities across the country, uh, all domestic based, started by my father. So if there's any questions about our national security or anything like that, uh, first time I've ever heard of it. So, that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Further comments? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Post same sign.
Aye.
Motion carries with Osowski dissenting. Thank you for joining us, sir. Item number 2.2, flex PACE loan request, B-Mobile Incorporated. Mr. Lund.
Yes, second project up consideration tonight is corporate headquarters of B-Mobile. They're a local Verizon distributor. Uh, they manage sixty retailer, retail operations out of their headquarters in Grand Forks. They're undertaking an expansion that will add, let me find my notes here, several positions, uh, in the Grand Forks community. I haven't found it yet, nevertheless, um, but they're going through the expansion. It's a million dollar project. Uh, the company is, uh, putting $200,000, $200,000 down on that project, uh, supported by Alaris Financial, uh, note, uh, being requested $26,000, $26,727.78 for a, uh, a flex PACE loan that will leverage a, a grant, uh, from the bank in North Dakota, $49,637.26. Uh, that will be used to buy down the interest rate of the primary note from Alaris Financial. Uh, security is a subordinate UCC on the equipment and personal guarantee from company principal, Brady Hanson. Um, we have here this evening Dylan McMillan, who is our controller, as well as John Rens from Alaris, should you have questions for them as well. Uh, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Lund. Mr. Sandy?
Mr. Lund, you, you were very quick there. Can you rephrase or emphasize what collateral we have on this loan, please?
The collateral we have on this loan is a blanket UCC filing on the assets, the equipment of B-Mobile.
So they're putting up the equipment and?
And, uh, and a, um, personal guarantee from principal Brady Hanson.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Lund. Ms. Soski?
What kind of equipment are they putting up? Like towers?
The, the link of UCC is on the equipment of the, uh, they're not putting up towers. This is a fit up of a corporate headquarters, so it would be things like modular walls and off, uh, furniture and computers and things like that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further comments from the committee? I'll open the public hearing on item 2.2. Anybody here to speak on item 2.2? Seeing none, is there any action by the committee?
I move approval.
We have a motion to approve by Berg, second by Sandy. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Move on to item number three, information items, 3.1.
And that's just the 2023 annual report.
Thank you. Any comments regarding the 2020, or annual report? Do we need a motion to approve that?
Nope.
No information only?
File.
Perfect. We have a motion to adjourn by Osowski, second by Berg. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Post same sign. Motion carries unanimously. We are adjourned.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to beautiful downtown Grand Forks. This is Grand Forks City Council's agenda for Tuesday, September 3rd, under item one, General Business 1.1. Welcome and roll call.
Weigel.
Here.
Soski.
Here.
Berg.
Here.
Lunskey.
Here.
Friedols.
Here.
Sandy.
Here.
And Vean.
Here.
All present, we have a quorum.
1.2, pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. Under, um, for those of you that don't know, I'm not the mayor. Uh, under mayor's announcements, there were a few things. Um, we, uh, we want to say thank you to Senator Hoven. Oh, and the mayor sends his regrets he couldn't be here tonight. Uh, we wanted to send a thank you out to Senator Hoven for leading, uh, the U.S. Postal Service meeting last week. Um, it was a good discussion, and hopefully, uh, the post, uh, the postal service can make sure that we get, uh, mail delivered appropriately in our community. Uh, Zach Bryan, uh, killed it at the Alaris Center two nights in a row. Um, it was amazing. Uh, thanks certainly to the folks in the community and, and those who traveled long distances to, uh, see him at the Alaris Center, and certainly the really hardworking people at the Alaris Center deserve a lot of credit for being able to pull that off. Um, for those of you that are, get excited about the Main Street Initiative, um, the governor awarded the city of Grand Forks and the Grand Forks Regional Economic Development Corporation the Main Street Excellence Award for urban cities, so larger cities in North Dakota, as part of his final Main Street Initiative Conference last week. Um, so that's exciting. I, I know the governor really thinks that we did a good job here, and we're continuing to do a good job developing our core, uh, the core of our community. Last, lastly, of course, uh, UND is back in session, and so we want to send a welcome to all the new students that are here on campus, the returning students, and likely some returning faculty and staff as well. So appreciate everybody working hard for the university. Moving on, item two.
2.1, proclamation, National Assisted Living Week, September 8th through the 14th.
All right, uh, so National Assisted Living Week is September 8th through the 14th. Uh, this year it's, uh, titled Inspiring Generations. Um, the mayor's proclamation, whereas the number of elderly and disabled Americans is dramatically increasing, and whereas assisted living is a long-term care service that fosters choice, independence, and autonomy in our elderly nationwide, and whereas the National Center for Assisted Living proudly created National Assisted Living Week. Lastly, whereas the theme of this year's National Assisted Living Week, Inspiring Generations, highlights the opportunity to bestow on our residents a multitude of events and activities that show them how much we care for them and how much they are loved. Now therefore, I, Dana Sandy, on behalf of Mayor Brandon Bochinski, mayor of Grand Forks, proclaim the week of September 8th through the 14th, 2024, as National Assisted Living Week in Grand Forks, North Dakota. I urge all citizens to visit friends and loved ones who reside at these facilities, and also to learn more about assisted living services and how they benefit our communities. Signed, Mayor Brandon Bochinski. Thank you. Item three.
3.1 is a public hearing and second reading of ordinance relating to manual on uniform traffic control devices, MUT CD update.
Before I open the public hearing, any comments or questions about item 3.1? Seeing none, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone interested in addressing item 3.1? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Is there a...
I move approval.
Moved by Vean.
Second.
Second by Berg. Thank you. Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Post same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item four, citizen comments.
Ms. Lunnmark, any citizen comments for action items tonight?
None for action items.
Thank you. Uh, under five action items, anyone have any action items to poll for the good of the order this evening? Any action items? Hearing none. That means for the, uh, for the good of the order, we'll move on 5.1, 5.2, 5.3, 5.4, 5.5, 5.6, 5.7, and 5.8.
I move approval.
Move by Osowski, second by Weigel. Further comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries unanimously. We have no informational items. Uh, item seven?
7.1 is your vendor list and engineer's estimate that's attached. I move approval.
Move by Osowski, second by Weigel. Further comment? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Post same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
And 7.2, the minutes from August 19th.
Is there an as-is or any corrections?
As-is.
As-is by Osowski, second by Berg. Further comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Post same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
Ms. Lunnmark, any citizen, general citizen comments this evening?
I have one. James Brown.
Good evening, Mr. Brown.
Good evening, city council, while the mayor's in Montana, but most of you already know me already, but for the people who don't know me, I am James Brown, Vice President of Self Advocacy Solution. Self Advocacy Solution, North Dakota. The work we do at our organization is aimed at providing education and opportunities to solve some of the challenges and barriers that people with disabilities face. We make sure our partners are empowered by creating change for individuals and their communities. Overall, there are about 42.5 million Americans with disabilities, making up 13% of civilian non-institutionalized population, according to the U.S. Census Bureau data from 2021. This group includes people with hearing, vision, cognitive, walking, self-care, or independent living difficulties. This part's for Mayor Brandon. Um, I've, I've emailed him things. He's going to email you guys, because I don't have all your emails. Reason I'm here today is to speak on behalf of the hard of hearing and deaf community with the appropriate training for the Grand Forks Police Department. I personally went down to the, a conference in Reno, Nevada, and this subject really struck my heart. While I was down there, I personally don't want to live in a city where the police are not properly trained to communicate with the deaf community. Info for everyone, lip reading is not legal language. Writing notes is more understandable, more understanding language. American Sign Language, English interpreter, video interpreter, are you aware registered interpreters is legally required for legal proceedings? Do you know most people in the deaf community have cards in their pockets to show they have difficult hearing? Uh, mayor and city council, I would request that the training be looked at and enforced appropriately so we don't become a city in the news. Just one example is, that really hit me that they were discussing down in Reno, is a gentleman could be, are deaf, right? And like I said, they're, they have pockets in their cards, or pocket, card in their pocket, I apologize, and they're taking a jog down, we have a beautiful greenway, they're taking a jog down Greenway, and there happens to be a robbery at Valley, or, um, Valley Dairy downtown right across from the mission. And the subject is identified as, but looking like as this individual that is deaf that had nothing to do with it. He gets, he taking a break from walking, and he starts jogging again. The police notice him and see him running. When he's running, the cop comes up close to him, and he can see that a police officer is there, so he stops. Most people that are deaf or in the hard of hearing committee, uh, community have cards, so he reaches for his hand, or reaches for his pocket. In law enforcement, when an individual reaches for their pocket, it's usually not good. They're bringing a card out. The training that I would like to see in the Grand Forks Police Department is to communicate well with that community. And I believe that in every community, it's a struggle with the deaf community. And that's it for tonight. Any of you guys got questions?
Any questions for Mr. Brown?
Five questions.
Yes, Ms. Soski?
Um, what types of cards do you guys carry? Is, is there some that are, like, issued, or is, can you, are you, who hands them out? Can you guys make your own? Yeah.
That is the introduction, that the person's dead. Okay. You heard that?
Um, yes, I did. Thank you. And then I guess I have a question for our police department. Um, it, do we have training for our police officers?
Good evening, Chief.
Hi, Chief.
Um, good evening. This is, um, this is a complex situation that, that we've dealt with, and the majority of the time, as... the time, as stated, about the only training we've had available to us now was passing notes back and forth. In that situation that's there, I would say both sides should probably have training because with us, we are taught from day one that hands kill. So we're trying to get to somebody, and they're reaching in their pockets. That's not to say everyone's going to jump to a conclusion because that hasn't happened here, but that does put our officers on alert. So I think as we work our way through it, now with the advent of technology, we have to look and say, is there something out there that we can pull up something on our phone or something else? But remind, remember, this guy doesn't know you when you're coming up as an officer, but we don't know them. We don't know that they're not the robber. We don't know what they're going into their pockets for. So what we're trying to do is get that balance of keeping them safe, which obviously that's what you pay us to do, is public safety. But you also don't pay us to be a martyr either. So at that point in time, you have to play each situation out dependent upon. And one could look and say, you know, if you're out jogging, more than likely you don't have baggy clothes on, could you look and see is there a bulge in the pocket? If there's not a bulge in the pocket, I can't see anybody jumping and going straight to a lethal force option. So I would say yes, is there things, ways that we could look at to see if we can try to leverage technology? Or I'll be honest with you, when I was on the street, and it hasn't evolved much more as, hi, I'm from the police, this is why I'm here, but that's when I already knew that they were hearing impaired.
Okay.
If you're out for a jog, what does a hearing impaired person look like? Could look like you, could look like me, could look like any of us, so.
I guess I'm just wondering because he mentioned that maybe there was some specialized training where we could maybe reuse...
You know, we've been through like a series of like specialized training on dealing with autism. We've dealt with psychiatric disorders, and, you know, a lot of the times, again, we'd have to look and see if there's refreshed training out there to say, is there a technology that's out there that the officer could use? But remember, in that moment, that's a split second contact. Am I going to have time to even pull up an app on my phone and go, hey, you're reaching in your pocket, I hope that's a card you're getting, and here's an app? And I don't know. Maybe that's, I think a good place to start would be a meeting with our Education and Outreach Bureau to sit back and say, how can we do this together? Is there some way, other than digging in your pockets, that you could communicate back to the officer that you're hard of hearing, even if that's something like pointing to your ears or, I don't know. And to be honest with you, in a perfect world, everybody would be fluent in sign language. But the 98 officers I have, A, would you be lucky to hit one of the few that would be trained in it? B, would they continue to be fluent in it if they're not regularly using it? So I'm not saying that's not an option, but I think what we need to do is kind of look at the situation, and I'd be more than happy if they wanted to get in touch with us. I can link them up with our Education Outreach Bureau, and maybe there's a common understanding that we can work for, because I think that communication has to be two ways because neither one of us desires a tragic outcome.
Right. And I think a common understanding is the perfect route to go. Just, I mean, maybe, I don't know if there's a common sign language motion for that you are deaf. I'm not sure. You know, even just something like that. But I was just wondering if you've been trained on it before, or if there is, I don't, I don't know, so.
It is one of the factors that we are, if somebody's not complying to our commands, then we've actually had officers that have pointed to their ear, and then all of a sudden, they shake their head, and now we understand why when we're telling you, get on the ground, put your hands up, do this, that they're not complying.
Right.
So there also is that component into dealing with that segment of society. So it's in our thought process.
Okay.
And it's something we're always looking to try to get better. And I think, I think maybe getting to that common ground of saying, hey, if you're hard of hearing, it's just like if you're stopped in your car, and the first thing you do want to help me out, and you're digging through your glove box, that makes us nervous, because like I said, you're taught from day one, it's the hands that kill. So we're very cognizant of that.
All right. I think you guys do a great job protecting our community. I just was wondering if there was a way to better communicate.
And I think that could be a start, and maybe, you know, and maybe there's, there could be training that I'm not aware of, and I think that could come to light over a meeting, getting the right people at the table to sit down and say, hey, help us learn. Because we're, like I said, we're always willing to learn. You never quit learning.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Can I say one more thing? Can I?
Mr. Brown, yes, sir.
Out, um, community outreach would be preferred, I think, and it's, you know, we have police in our high schools, and they do education for our schooling, but do we have police educating in the deaf and blind school in Grand Forks?
Likely not, but do we...
Do we have police education or outreach in the deaf and blind school in Grand Forks?
President Sandy wrote to the council, not that I'm aware of, because right now the, and that's not to say we couldn't provide it, but when you're looking at it from the school resource officer perspective, it's got to be something that's within the Grand Forks Public School system, which would be actually the three high schools and the three middle schools that we would cover, and then they cover down on the elementary schools. But being the North Dakota School for the, for the deaf and blind, we do not have anybody up there. I don't know, Councilman Weigel, I don't know that UND does either, so, you know, that might be something to check through the state, but that would normally be outside of our purview or jurisdiction to return, to actually respond to calls there, so.
So who would I, who would I contact?
Mr. Brown, I can chat with you after. I know that the UND Police Department has toured the school for the blind and deaf. And had some conversations about safety planning and what they could do in certain situations, and so I'd be happy to chat with you after.
Sounds good. Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Weigel. Item nine, city administrator comments, Mr. Phelan?
Nothing further. Council president's heading.
Thank you. Item 10, mayor and council member comments, Ms. Osowski?
No, thank you, President.
Ms. Berg?
No, thank you.
Ms. Lensky?
No, thank you.
Ms. Friedals?
Nothing, thank you.
Mr. Veen?
No, thank you.
Thank you all for joining us. I know it's hard to be on the road, so I appreciate it. Mr. Weigel?
No, thanks.
Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn by Osowski, second by Berg? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Same sign? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, everybody. Good meeting.